We're meeting to order here for Monday, September 8th at 7:00 PM. Our roll call looks like we have all members with us these evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the like United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
No move?
Got a motion by Councilmember Torres, second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Consent agenda, any questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Harkoff to approve tonight's consent agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, next is matters on the floor. Any wishing to speak, please fill out one of the yellow cards and present it to one of the city staff and we'll call you up. Are there any matters on the floor? Third time, matters on the floor? Good. Matters on the floor now closed, moving on. Seven, special business, seven A. Approve special event permit application for Get It Done Fitness and Fit Productions LLC.
Mayor, council, we received a special event permit for Fit Productions LLC to use Site Park for some filming for some sort of movie. Everything has been reviewed by all staff, all staff has signed off on it, and so we're ready to present this and ask the council for approval.
Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have one question. On the application, item number seven, mentions that there's an application for use of Site Park, including one portable toilet. That's already there, right?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I see they're starting at 7:00 AM. Do they, will they wait until 7:00 to bring in their trucks and all their equipment, or do they plan on setting up early?
I think they'll be setting up, but it's not like big trucks or anything. They're just gonna be mostly like, I don't even think it's a box truck, it's trucks or trailers and things like that, so it's not anything more noisier than regular, so.
So they won't violate our noise ordinance?
No, our noise ordinance, no, they will not.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, no, they're filming a TV pilot. Questions? We look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the special event permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, seven B, approve community center and Bor Boom Park ban shell fee waiver for Osseo Lions Halloween event.
Mayor, council, the Osseo Lions is asking to use the community center and Bor Boom Park ban shell during their Halloween event, and they've asked for a fee waiver for that. So they're just asking for a fee waiver.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Does this coincide with what we've done in years past for the same event?
Yeah, and then, yes, and also part of, that's another question I guess we could discuss here is, do we even need a fee waiver from them?
I can answer it. So, yes, you're remembering back the same thing I was remembering earlier, and I did talk with staff, we reviewed the ordinance today, and the language regarding the participation in charitable gambling and waiving some of those things doesn't appear to be in our ordinance, so I don't know whether we need to, but the original concept behind their participation in the charitable gambling fee was that one of the things we're going to do is to give fee waivers for gateway sign and then community-based things. So I've been surprised at the request for fee waivers. Sure, Mary remembers us talking about this at length back in the day, it just doesn't say anything in our ordinance, so I don't know if this is something we maybe need to put into policy officially in some way, just so that, because it's kind of one of the things that we, when we did this, we told everybody, this is how it was gonna work for you, and make sure that we're promoting, giving them an opportunity to promote themselves so that then they can bring, you know, because most of it's pull tabs related, so, so they then could go in and they could get, hopefully, a promotional bump in their pull tabs, because it's actually, I believe, against the law for them to pay for advertising with pull tab revenue, so that's one of the concessions that we discussed very openly. So, it was, I was very surprised, but I had questioned it at the last meeting when we gave them the fee waiver for their advertisement on the gateway sign, because I didn't remember us giving fee waivers when the Legion was advertising on that, and then all of a sudden it's up here now, so if it's not in ordinance or it's not in policy, I'd like to encourage us as a part of making this wrapped up to put it there someplace, or at least get consent to give to city staff so they could figure out how to do it.
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would agree with that. I think that if we can get that into policy somehow, we can save staff time, because then staff wouldn't have to be dealing with filling these out, accepting them, putting them in packets, and doing all that stuff, right?
Mr. Mayor and council, if you'd give me, I don't think we, I mean, we could do it at a work session, we could do it right now, but if that's what everybody's telling me, we can pretty much put that into our applications too, to where if you're one of these groups, we can say you don't need to apply, or, you know, we check the.
What we actually did is that we kind of laid the groundwork for this, but then we also set it up so that staff could approve it, because this stuff still has to go through staff to make sure that, let's say the gateway sign, make sure that they're used, that they're following the standards for advertising and, and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, we can deal with this, I don't think we need to deal with it right now unless our direction is enough to put it into policy.
I think it is, and as far as it's not, I don't, unless we want to do an actual written policy on that, but we can just change our forms to reflect that if you check this box, your fee is waived, which would be, we would list those gambling associations, and they would just check that box and all fees could be waived.
I think, I think my personal preference is to put some kind of policy so that it predates a conversation and just some language in an application.
Yep.
And Mary's nodding her head yes, so she likes that idea too.
Mr. Mayor, I would fully support, I mean, I think we're running into that already, where we're coming across things of agreements that were made, and we can't find it in writing, and we can't, I mean, I just assume we put everything we possibly can in official policy.
I thought we did, I just was surprised that it didn't make it in there somehow.
Man, council, I think, I recall that we did put.
Okay, yeah, so then, yeah, okay.
We just gotta add that. Emulate that on these kind of things, then.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, look for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the community center Bor Boom Park ban shell fee waiver for the Lions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, number eight, public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number nine, old business, no old business in front of us this evening. Number 10, new city staff to sign participation and release form for Purdue Pharma opioid settlement.
Mayor and council, I'm gonna turn this over to Attorney Teaching.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, the memorandum in your packet gives the background on this matter's information was prepared by colleague of mine in our office. This is relating to the Purdue Pharma opioid settlement. Purdue Pharma is the manufacturer of OxyContin, and they originally filed bankruptcy back in 2019, and as part of that bankruptcy, they had entered into a settlement agreement with state and local governments to provide about $4.3 billion for use in addressing the opioid crisis. That settlement was thrown out by the Supreme Court in 2024 on procedural grounds, and there's now a new settlement that addresses those issues and that allocates about $7.4 billion for use by local governments for addressing the opioid crisis. So, in order for the city to participate in this, the city has to opt in, so we're looking for approval from the council tonight to opt into that settlement, and we're recommending approval of doing so, because the only other option is for the city to individually take them on, which of course is not, not realistic and, and highly likely to be unsuccessful. So, if the council does approve this tonight, we would be able to opt into the settlement and authorize staff to sign, to sign the needed forms, and, which is something that city administrator has access to. I think generally, most cities are opting into this so they can have access to those settlement funds, and Councilmember Schultz had reached out via email today asking about how those funds can be used, and I did send him some information, I could also send that same information to others if you're interested, but essentially, there's a number of eligible uses for, for these funds, you know, and just very broadly speaking, a lot of communities are using this for, like, purchasing Narcan, or, you know, having community outreach or education initiatives around opioid use, that kind of thing, but there are any number of eligible uses that, to which the funds could be put, assuming that any, any of those funds comes your way.
All right, thank you. I have more questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the city attorney and staff for answering that inquiry today. I think probably the only person sitting here that would find it as interesting reading is probably Mr. Torres, but it's a very robust link with lots and lots of documents, so you knock yourself out if you want, Nick.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So the closing on this agreement is the 30th of this month?
Yes.
And then, how long do they anticipate until it settles out and they actually?
About 10 years.
Two years?
Yeah, when was the original settlement?
15 years.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out certainly if you're interested and try to get back to you on that.
Oh, because I just, I understand there's usually a rescission period for settlement agreements.
Yeah, but most likely, I, those are details that I don't know the answer to, but.
Right, and I wouldn't expect that, I'm just, just curious. Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is a no-brainer, I think, from a legal perspective.
And with that, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we, let me make sure I say it right, authorize city staff to sign participation release form for Purdue Pharma opioid settlement.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Torres to authorize city staff to enter into the release form. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, 10B, approve third reading of zoning ordinance updates for zoning changes at 241 Fifth Avenue Southeast.
Mayor, council, this will be Assistant City Administrator Vickerman speaking on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, tonight we're looking for consideration to approve the first reading of the ordinance, amending amendment for rezoning of 241 Fifth Avenue Southeast. This matter was reviewed by the Planning Commission at our last meeting, and they did vote to bring this forward to city council and recommend approval. The property at 241 Fifth Ave is owned by Wiley Enterprises, and Mr. Wiley is here tonight as well, and he was also present at the Planning Commission public hearing and took some comments and questions from neighbors and people, people nearby. What the project that he's looking to get completed is, there is a residential duplex on this parcel, as well as a portion of a neighboring commercial building is, is also on the same property. He will be demolishing the residential duplex and converting that portion of the lot to serve, to serve as additional parking for the adjacent commercial business, and they are asking for a zoning change from R1, which is single-family residential, to C2N Highway Commercial North, to align the zoning designation with the current proposed use of the property. And because we can see that there is a partial commercial building, as well as a residential building on the property, it does suggest that there is a mixed-use history to that lot, so it makes sense to clarify whether that should be commercial or residential. The owner has indicated that the rental property there just doesn't make sense for, for their use, and they have put forward some plans to use landscape screening and fencing to kind of close in the parking area, and then taking down the building, which, I should clarify that taking down the building is an entirely separate issue from the rezoning.
It's gone.
Yeah, right, yeah, it's, it's already been, it's already been approved, so that is something that the property owner had the right to do, and they moved forward with all of the, all of the coordinating permits and permissions along the way. One other question that has come up in regards to this rezoning has been, what would the difference in property taxes be from that parcel if it was to be rezoned? The slightly shortened answer that I got from the county, which is that although the commercial tax rate is slightly higher, if we were to look at the valuation of that same property at the 2024 valuation with a building, it was about $419,000 was the, the valuation there, and without a building, it would be about $201,000. So, with the remover of the building, so a reduced valuation to the property, but then a higher tax rate as opposed to, from being residential to C2N, it makes up for about a difference of $1,322.91 in the City of Osseo's portion of that tax, so a nominal amount, I guess really, but if it were to stay R1, that difference would be slightly greater, because it would be at a higher rate, or it is at a higher rate currently, I should say. Other things to consider, the applicant has already submitted the $500 fee for the zoning amendment application. The building permit and zoning review fees to demolish the building were $635.31, and as we mentioned before, those are two separate issue, the zoning and then the demolition. So tonight, we're just looking for the council to consider these and consider moving forward with the approval of the first reading of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, there was a question, and I don't remember if this was at the planning meeting or a meeting of this body, but there was just, it was kind of tossed out there about six-foot fencing versus nine-foot fencing, and six-foot fencing is allowed within the ordinance, and if they chose to do a nine-foot, to further make a distinction between the neighbors and this commercial thing, there would have to be variances, and I'm just kind of curious if anything, if that's even a thing to consider or worry about, or.
Well, we did have a council member bring forward a question about the fence height and what the regulations are for a commercial property. I dug in through code and I, I found that a lot of regulations around a residential zone, but not as much around a commercial zone, so I did send that question to Mary too, and we just, I'm just, I'm not finding the really detailed answer to that question in code currently.
Okay. That was, that was all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So I was the one that asked that question, and one of the things that makes me feel pretty good about this is that Mr. Wiley has been a really good city partner, they take very good care of their properties, we don't have to deal with blight, they're always very respectful, making sure everything is nice and clean, and that particular area since it is so close to residential, I asked about the fencing only from the perspective is that we look at some of our other very close proximity, proximity commercial properties, and they're storing stuff that's way above the fencing, so we see it, and it's not obscured fencing, and so, kind of just looking forward to that, it's something that, since it's not in code right now, I think that bears some ability for us to look at it and potentially maybe put something in place, because we don't, in an ideal world, and I, I believe Mr. Wiley, it'd be the same way in this one, he doesn't want to cause any nuisances to the neighbors, you know, and I think part of that is if you're going to be using in a commercial and you're gonna store some stuff out there, that, and if it's out there and it's unsightly, as we have in a couple of different properties in town, I think we all know which ones we're referencing, just the opportunity there, so whether it's a, whether it's a mandatory, or I think at this point in time, a commercial change to, you know, maybe in the, in the ordinance required that any outdoor storage be screened from the view like that, I mean, as much as we can, like, we can't make them close off an entryway to a driveway or something like that, but since it's not in place now, we really can't consider it, but I think that's something that we should consider down the road a bit.
So, Mr. Mayor? I'm gonna make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before a motion's made, I just want to alert the council, because this is a rezoning from residential to commercial, it does by state statute require four votes to pass.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment for rezoning of 241 Fifth Avenue Southeast.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the first reading of the ordinance changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. 10C, approve first reading of the ordinance amending chapter 91 and approve appointment of administration of fire construction permits.
Mayor and council, this is again Assistant City Administrator Alicia Vickerman.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, as many of you might remember, we did transition to a business relationship with Rum River Consultants back in March, so RRC has, is the designated building official for the City of Osseo, and that became effective as of June 11th, 2025. As a part of that transition, we've been looking through, first, our building code, and now we're moving on to the Minnesota Fire Code, getting the City of Osseo updated with the current Minnesota Fire Code standards. So we worked with Rum River here, they did, they went ahead and just drafted the ordinance amendment, and then they have provided a list of just kind of a redlined version of all the changes that get made to the fire code. They have been working with Fire Chief Cogswell, so I'll bring them up here in a second too, just to kind of say what their experience is and what exactly they're looking for tonight. But the, the primary reason for us being here tonight is just to get the, the fire code updated and to make sure that we appoint Andy Schrader to administer our fire construction permits in the City of Osseo, that is one of our requirements. So I will turn it over to these guys if they have some comments. We have Andy Schrader from Rum River and Barry Brainard, I like, I really like your last name, it's fun.
Nothing to do with the city.
And Chief Cogswell is here, he's been through this as well.
Yep, welcome, come on up.
In no particular order.
Whoever's feeling talkative.
Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you. You guys have any questions, first of all?
The only question that I have regarding some of the ordinance language is when it talks about recreational fires, and we put a time limit on of midnight, so I don't know if that was a recommendation or a hard thing, I just, you know, sometimes if in the summer, if you're out late, it's not, you know, our quiet hours are 10, if you got the fire going past midnight, I, I don't know whether that's how everybody feels about that being a hard stop, or if we would look to, at this point in time, change that to a different time, if anybody has any strong feelings about it. I can just see one of these, you know, it's midnight and someone's driving around sees a fire and they don't like it, and it's not impacting them, they can call and report it, so I didn't know whether like 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM would be a, a more appropriate time, I just wanted to throw that out for the council to consider. I would say that everything else is great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And I think, I would, I would kind of echo that, because it's a really good neighborhood thing, right? I mean, that's one of the things I noticed about Osseo moving here, was there's a lot of community, and a lot of the community has the little fire pits and people kind of sitting around, and people are generally responsible, I'm assuming, like, with that, and the timing, I mean, that makes sense, because that's when bars close, bars close at 2:00, so why shouldn't people in their backyards in the privacy of their own home with friends be able to kind of have that kind of fun until the same time? So I think 2:00 AM is not unreasonable for something like that, unless the chief feels that there's some reason why it should be earlier than that. The good, good thing, I never looked at it being midnight, that's kind of new thing for me, have you known that?
Well, thank you, mayor and council, and that's really discretionary, every jurisdiction has a desire for something like that, someone might like to pare it down a little bit earlier in the evening, but I understand your justification, certainly, and that's certainly up to, to you.
Yeah, so I think it's not an unreasonable thing to reconsider going from midnight to 2:00.
Seems.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Outside of that, thank you, mayor and council, again, for entertaining this conversation. This is really a formal adoption process, much like the building code, it's what's called a statewide standard, but the jurisdiction doesn't have the ability to administer the code unless it's formally adopted, as we're talking about this evening.
Another question, can you explain what a fire construction permit is?
Thank you for the question, mayor and council. So there's two permits, two types of permits under the fire code, a fire construction permit and then a fire operational permit. The construction permit is when you install something like fire sprinklers, fire alarms, when you actually deal with the installation of such a, an item. The operational permit is how you care for that, the annual inspections, the inspections of the riser room and things of that nature, so construction permits is when you actually install it, operational permits is when you maintain it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
We look for a motion.
Let's kind of find the language here. Where's the language?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I'll just make note here too, that the.
Page 76.
Yep, you've got three separate items that happen as a part of this one agenda item, and then when we get down to number three, I just wanted Fire Chief Cogswell to make sure he let you know precisely which option A or B they've discussed and, and worked out between them.
For that, for three, I recommend 3A, for me to continue to do the operational permits.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, so regarding the actual redlining and changes, it seems, and thank you, staff, for putting that in a more concise view, I think a lot of this, in fact, almost all of it, is all recency, we're just getting our ordinance to catch up to what it should be to align with the state, and it's a lot of definitional language stuff, we're not really adding or subtracting anything, we're just bringing it up to what it should be and calling fire marshals, fire marshals and so forth. Is that a good assessment of what I read? Correct, but remember, it, it, it comes up again next year, when they update it again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And maybe this is maybe an attorney question, can this be made as, as one motion that approves all these three, or three separate motions? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance, number 2025-6, amending chapter 91 of the city code related to the fire prevention, do I need to add in there the language with the editorial changes that were suggested this evening?
Yes, because we changed what's in there.
With the editorial changes that were suggested this evening?
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the first reading of the ordinance with noted changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we need something on.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to make a motion to appoint Andy Schrader to administrate, administer fire construction permits in the City of Osseo.
Got a motion by Councilmember Cook to appoint Andy Schrader as the administrator of fire construction permits. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question about that. So we're, we're using a specific human being in this particular case versus your company? Is there a specific reason for that?
Thank you for the question, mayor and council, there is actually a delegation process through the Minnesota State Fire Marshals Association. I am, I do carry that delegation, as does Barry Brainard and Fred Patch in our office as well, so even if you were assigned to the company, you'd still have to have a person assigned to that role.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to assign Fire Chief Mike Cogswell the duties of administering operational permits with RRC providing fill-in services at their previously approved hourly rate.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to assign Fire Chief Mike Cogswell to the duties of administering operational permits. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
All right, 10D, council payable, questions on that?
Most to approve, council payable.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's council payable. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Harkoff. Any further discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, administrator report.
Mayor, council, it appears that we had a really good Lions Roar. As far as public safety went, it went really well. Everyone made it home, everyone in Osseo seemed to have a good time. So I was there for most of it. I would say all of, probably the less of two hours maybe I missed. The one thing that did happen that I know, Mayor, you're going to speak about, but we are going to reschedule that 150th celebration, it hasn't been finalized yet. Once we get that information, we'll get it out on social media and get it up on our page, and we'll be working on that this week. So that's just something to look forward to. But I will tell you, our staff did a great job, Public Works cleaned up the city, cleaned up the city afterwards. With the rain that happened at the parade, everyone just kind of got up and left, and so there was quite a bit of stuff laying everywhere. And so I think they did a great job cleaning up the city and making us all look good. I think they did a great job. I want to thank the Lions. This is always a great event, brings a lot of people to town. I'd like to just say that our businesses, all of them, whether they're restaurants or whatever, everyone had a lot of good things to say. And even with the threat of rain, and even with all that rain that came down and in spots, it was real spotty, people were there. I mean, it was still packed, which I think bodes well for how the Lions do their parade and just how our city is so welcoming for those people that don't live here. So I do, I do want to say that parking, we made it through with, I think, one or two parking tickets, even with all those people into town, but we had plenty of parking for people. And it just, again, another year, this is, this was my 21st year being a part of Lions Roar as a city staff person. So I was really proud of how all of our staff enjoyed their time. Some of them enjoyed Lions Roar themselves and came out, and it went really, really, really well. I'm really impressed on how, even with all, in my job as a police chief, with all the alcohol being served and all the drinking, people stayed safe, there was no fights, we had no issues at our bars. I mean, they do a great job there. I was very impressed, and again, just another great, great time had by all, I think. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Assistant City Administrator Vickerman.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say that, too, but also just thank you to the Lions because the amount of organization that goes behind putting all of these things together and the craft sale in the park and trying to figure out where everyone was going to be, they did so much coordination. And with the 150th, they did the pop-up museum, so I don't know if people got a chance to go over there and look, but it was just really interesting and such a great highlight of the community. It's always fun to see so many people packed into Osseo on these weekends, and it's just, you never hear anyone having anything negative say, it's what a great place that puts us on. It's just so much, it's a tighter, it's a tighter run event than I think some, even some other cities have, just because we're concentrated in that one little area. So it just makes it so much fun. And so, yeah, just thank you to the Public Works and police and fire and everybody who made it just run really smoothly. So that's all I got.
Council and attorneys report, attorney TJ.
I have no report, Mayor, other than I'm sorry I had to miss the event this year. I look forward to it and have participated in some of the events, but was not able to do so this year. But I guess that means I have a whole year to train.
Yes. Win it again. All right. Councilmember Harkoff.
Your report.
Councilmember Torres.
Would also like to echo staff's kudos for an excellent weekend, and also would like to extend kudos to the 150th, the folks in the 150th Commission for that pop-up museum. It was just absolutely fabulous to go in and see all the rich history. Saw Councilmember Harkoff's lineage in there, which was really fun to see, you know, when you got a neighbor and then you see somebody from, you know, decades and decades and centuries and whatnot. I mean, it's just, it was really cool. And it was a lot of hard work done by those folks to set that up. I think they set it up without a hitch, and it was just really cool. It was really fun. So kudos to that team that did that. That's it.
Councilmember Cook.
Again, echo staff's thank yous to the Lions and Public Works and everybody. Selfishly, I'm going to say thank you to those of you up here, sitting up here, for joining us on the float this year. Last year, it was just me and Poppy, and it was kind of lonely. So, I mean, Poppy's great, but I talked to him for that whole parade and just him. So this year, it was nice to be able to have some other conversation, you know? But it was great, and to have all the little kids up there with us, I thought was really fun, too. And just the livelihood and the energy, I think, speaks to, you know, what this group is and what we're about. So that was really, really fun. And again, thank you to the 150th crew and everything that they did to help, and I'm looking forward to the rescheduling of their event because it was unfortunate that it had to kind of go the way it did with the rain. But I know that those, that that group will do a great job of rescheduling and putting on a fantastic situation. I know that there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work for that event, and then to have that event not happen is always kind of disappointing and hard. So, but I'm looking forward to seeing in the future what they're going to put together because I know it's going to be great, just like everything else they've done in preparation for this. So that's all I got.
Councilmember Schultz.
Same stuff, parade was fun. Sorry I couldn't make it last year, my son was playing football. It was really fun having the kids on there, they really had a blast. I think if we totaled up everybody's candy, we probably threw out about probably 7,000 pieces of candy, all told. So, and so I need to bring back up because I got a bad wrist and a bad shoulder, so, but a little bit of pain was worth it. It was a great time. Craft fair went off, I'd probably get in trouble if I didn't mention that probably, I think this is probably the 10th year that my wife has organized that for the Lions. So that's evolved, and it ended up being a great event. Up until the rain came, all the crafters were very happy to be here. They, nobody complained about the new setup to accommodate the 150th, and I think that that setup might actually be a way to increase it in the future. So, you know, little changes come and make everything better. You know, Lions Roar was, Lions Roar was a great time, got plenty wet out there trying to do that. You know, it's always a shame when it rains. I can't remember Lions Roar where it actually rained during the parade, ever. But, and nor really, I mean, I think it was a summer party once that it probably rained on. But outside of that, we don't really ever have problems with rain, so I guess it was probably our time. So unfortunate, I do know that for a lot of our businesses in town, this is a really, this is a great event for them, not only from the community aspect, but from the financial aspect. And they all did, they did really, really well. So I wanted to thank staff for getting the answers to all the questions that I had prior to the meeting today. Spurred a lot of good conversations, so I'm excited about that. Welcoming the new firefighters and reserve officers on board, and outside of that, that's enough from me.
Yes, thank you. As everyone said, staff, committees, Lions, it was just such a great event. So thank you to everyone. Moving on, there's no announcements this evening, moving on, adjournment. Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Harkoff, non-negotiable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We're adjourned at 7:39.